Good evening, this regular meeting of the Mount Horeb Area School District Board of Education will come to order. Roll call, Danny. Diana.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
I am here as well, and I saw Kate, who we'll hear from in just a minute. Dr. Solerno, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Great, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a volunteer to read the mission statement tonight?
I can read it, Rod. It's Jessica. The Mount Horeb Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Jessica, we'll move to item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
So move.
Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second, Diana.
Jeff has moved, and Diana has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the January 18th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
So move.
Jeff has moved.
This is Jessica, I'll second.
And Jessica has seconded a motion to approve the January 18th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the January 18th, 2021 regular meeting minutes are approved. Item 3A, student spotlight. Jax, are you with us, buddy?
Yeah, I don't see him either. I did just resend the link to his mom, Leanne, so...
Great. Well, what I think we can do is we can take on school news, and then we'll circle back. Kate, what's going on? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Awesome.
Hi, so the first thing that I wanted to talk about was actually something that I saw on the high school announcements this morning. Apparently, there's some new stuff on the school store online, so I just wanted to suggest checking that out. Not sure if Solerno has anything else to say about that, but I just wanted to put that out. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is something that pertains mostly to high schoolers or parents of high schoolers. As a member of yearbook club, we are always looking for photo submissions. So if there are any photos of socially-distanced and masked groups of students, we would love to see those in the yearbook this year. And finally, I just wanted to share something that our student council is doing for teachers this Valentine's Day. You can just make a fun Valentine and bring it to the high school anytime from February 4th to the 12th. It can be just a positive quote or something you would think a teacher might enjoy. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Awesome. Great report, as usual. Kate, thank you always for being here. Uh, Dr. Solerno, do you have any additions?
She's always up to great stuff, isn't she? But a couple of things, if you don't mind. First, this is National School Counselors Week, and of course, we want to congratulate and thank all of our school counselors for the support they provide to our students and our families. I happened to etch this morning's newspaper, and maybe you did too. We have a student who is graduating high school through a program called Operation Fresh Start. Brayden Holtser is a success story this year with the program, and a great article about the program, and Brayden is even in one of the pictures here. We had a graduation ceremony for him this afternoon in Madison, so we thank him. The board would be pleased to know that we're also looking at our at-risk program for review this summer, so we'll continue to update the board there. And Mr. President, I have a very special guest today, somebody who has worked very, very hard, along with her amazing staff, to get the Intermediate Center off the ground, and having a special day. How are you? Katie, how are you?
Hello, yes, our school news is we're back open. It's been since March 13th since we've had students in school, and we welcomed our Cohort A today. There were, well, we were all masked, so I didn't see a lot of smiles, but I heard a lot of happy voices, great reports that they were feeling good, being there, excited to be there. Teachers and our staff members reported that it was really great to have students back in the classrooms, back in the hallways, out on the playground. And all of our efforts really paid off. It was a pretty smooth day overall. We were welcoming our third graders in who were brand-new to the Intermediate Center, and so they were very brave in coming in to a new school and meeting all kinds of new staff. And our fourth and fifth graders got right back into the swing of things, and it was just a really great day. We're looking forward to welcoming back our Cohort B on Thursday, and we've got a pretty awesome group of staff who are also supporting our virtual learners, who are continuing there. And they are having their second first week of school this week, as they get used to new classmates, a new teacher maybe, and just getting a fresh start to the second semester. And so it's a really big week at the Intermediate Center this week.
Well, that's awesome, Katie. Thank you for your report, and thanks for all your hard work to get to today. I don't think we know the half of what you and your team did to get us here and to get the kids back in the classroom where they belong, but thank you so much for all of your hard work to make that happen. You've done a terrific, terrific job.
Well, thanks, Rod. I always will offer that our students and our staff are what drives our work. Their good work inspires us, and we're so grateful for our students, our families, and our staff members have been really awesome partners with us, and it's been a team effort the whole way.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we, uh, we're, uh, this is, uh, oh, yes, we've got citizen comments. This is like, a little bit like Where Is Waldo, we're trying to find Jax, but we'll find him, and we'll be able to recognize him at some point, so that's awesome. But we're gonna go to item 3A, citizen comments. Those who are wishing to speak as part of citizen comments should send a text with their first, last name to 608-250-9166, 608-250-9166, and you'll be able to make a citizen comment, and we'll play your favorite song. All right, let's, uh, who is first, Dr. Solerno?
So far, no one, so you better start singing.
Oh, boy. I think I aged myself, dated myself by suggesting that, anyway. Any, uh, any takers? All right, going once, going twice, going three times for citizen comments. We'll move to item 4A, personnel transactions. Dr. Solerno?
Yes, a couple of items, if you don't mind me mentioning, on our personnel transactions this evening. First, there is an addenda that is a part of tonight's transactions, the first of which has to do with a retirement, and sadly, a retirement. Someone who's been with the district 30-plus years, and I'm referring to Marsha Light. Ms. Light has been with the district at the middle school level for a number of years. She actually started out in our district in 1988. She was hired to teach fifth grade, back in the day when fifth grade used to be a part of the middle school. And her career really spans two stints with the district. After 12 years, Ms. Light took a sabbatical to care for her family and assist in her family's growing business. And at the end of that two-year sabbatical, she had resigned her position so that she could commit herself more fully to her family and that growing business opportunity with her husband. But the classroom kept calling her back, and after a period of substituting and job sharing, Ms. Light returned to the classroom in 2002, and a few years later, she settled into a full-time sixth-grade language arts position. Those who know our dear Marsha know her to be highly committed to young people and our profession. Her focus on middle-school-aged children is one of her many hallmarks. I've always appreciated her leadership roles in our district-level committees. She's been on our calendar committee, our personnel committee, and also been a teacher leader. She recently told me, "I'm teaching a secondary generation of Mount Horeb students now, which has been one of the highlights of my career." Well, it is an absolute pleasure to have had you be a part of our school district. You've always been such a rock for our students, our staff, and our families. Congratulations to you and your fan, Ms. Light. You will be missed. And if you don't mind me also mentioning, we are also fortunate to be welcoming the return of a familiar colleague. Molly Birick is coming back to our Special Education Department. She will return to the diagnostic position she previously held, so we congratulate both of these fine professions.
Awesome. Unless there's any further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve personnel transactions.
Motion to approve.
Second, Kimberly?
Jeff has moved, and Kimberly has seconded to approve the personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. And now it's back to item 3A, we found Jax.
Jax? How's the Pusso family this evening? We're so great to have you here, buddy. It's a pleasure to see you and your beautiful family tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have for us tonight Nicole Teef, our 4K coordinator. And I also see Jax's teacher, Mrs. Durdough. She is one of our teachers at the Academy of Little Boys. If you can turn it over to Mrs. Teef and Mrs. Durdough to tell us how come we get to recognize this fantastic little guy?
Well, in terms of Jax's classroom, it has been kind of a wild year with some bumps along the way, and that's to be expected as kids learn how to do school. But one thing that was very apparent to both me and Teacher Karen is that Jax, from the beginning, showed a leadership quality that was just quiet and subtle, and he just is a very kind child. He's the kind of kid that everybody thinks is his best friend, because that's how he treats everybody. Whoever he's with, they just are so happy to be with him and play with him. And he will go above and beyond for his friends. If they're having a hard time, he will do something to make them feel better. And I'm sure, Teacher Karen, you have some things to add as well, but we're so lucky to get to know Jax this year.
Thanks, Nicole. Jax is one of the sweetest, kind-hearted kids I've had the pleasure of having in class. And I know I've told Anne this probably like a thousand times, but Jax is just always that kind friend that's willing to help out wherever he can. And if a friend's having a bad day, he goes and tries best to try to make that friend feel welcome and knows that they can always come and join him and play. And it's so sweet to see in class, and you guys are doing a wonderful job raising him. Thank you for letting me be a part of this.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
We see two special people around you. Who are those nice people? Can you introduce them, please?
Mom and dad.
Mom and dad, and we had the chance to go visit you at your house, didn't we? Who's that special person behind you? And you also have a sister too, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you were such a delight. Thank you so much for letting us all come to your home to share a nice certificate with you and celebrate this very special day. By all accounts, you're just a very special little boy, and we can't wait to see all the things that you do in the next 12 years here in our school district. Say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the award.
Let's say, "Go Vikings." He was gonna say, "Go Vikings," but I guess he's not gonna say. Thank you, guys, so much.
Awesome. Man, we need, we need more of that, for sure. All right, moving on to item 5, the consent agenda, item 5 with items A, B, C, and D. Does anyone want to pull any of those four items out?
Motion to approve, Kimberly?
This is Leah, second.
Kimberly has moved, and Leah has seconded a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item 6, discussion item 6A, committee member reports. Buildings and grounds and transportation committee, Dr. Hannah.
Transportation, they're building determined new routing schedules for the return of hybrid instruction for grades 3 through 12. The new routing schedules were mailed out, emailed out, and 1:25 after 5:00 p.m. There's still some concerns for bus drivers. They have enough, but when it comes to trips, it makes it a little bit of a challenge. And that, the building and grounds, all protocols have been met for the ELC and PC. The protocols for the IC will be also followed. The levels of the ELC and PC with minor adjustments. And for the high school and middle school, there will be protocols put in place for those buildings as they come available. And they have to make changes in new furniture and last-minute details. And they're monitoring all the amounts of fresh air that can be brought into the buildings. And for district grounds, projects updates. The sidewalks were all repaired around the PC. And the monuments signed for the high school. These were all approved for the referendum dollars, and due to scheduling, were not completed yet. Roof and, what the hell? In the spring, the addition of a roof access door at the PC to provide safer access to the HVAC equipment will be main put in. Finally, the water and sewer connections and concrete in the upper shed at the high school will be completed in the spring. Future discussion items, we're talking about purchases for the transportation department and that they are for buses and vans and replacing in some of the mechanic fleet vehicles. And that is it.
Well, thank you, Jeff, for your report. Finance, Diana?
Yes, hello, good evening. So the finance committee met on January 11th. We discussed and approved two donations that were equal to about $10,000 each, which was very fortunate. We continue to enjoy strong support from our community. We performed our quarterly review of the budget. We also discussed the budget revision cycle. The next revision to the budget will be in late winter to early spring. We also discussed the reduction of athletic fees for winter sports, and we sent that to the full board at the last meeting. We discussed our 2021-2022 budget calendar and the budget variables for next year. We'll be meeting on that more in February, and our next meeting is on the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Safety and wellness, Leah?
So I actually missed the last safety and wellness meeting, so I don't really have much to provide except for what's in the minutes. I actually wasn't there, unless Brian has something to add. But, yeah, it's in the minutes. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, the big highlights from that meeting were, we've now completed the SABERS mental health screener for 4th, 6th, and 7th grade. High school's next. We're gonna do still a little bit more digging into that before we do it administered at the 9th grade. We talked about the stat time and the great work that's being done with academic and career planning and moving that forward. And then we talked a lot about the equity audit. We kind of went in-depth on some of that component and what it looked like and future moving forward, and we're gonna re-talk about that tonight, so everybody's kind of on the same page as well. And then we went through the staff wellness survey and talked about the different results, what that looked like, and how we kind of continue that. So, yeah, that's kind of in a nutshell. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Brian. Are there any other reports from board committees? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 6B, second Friday in January enrollment update. Mr. DeYoung?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. We had our second Friday in January count just completed. You'll see a document with the agenda to support that number. You may recall that we really have two important student counts during the school year. The famous third Friday count in September that comes up fairly often in various conversations. And then the next one is the, like I said, the second Friday count in January. When you compare the two, you'll find they're pretty consistent, and they typically are from September to January. We saw just a slight increase, but overall, remaining consistent. Where the big fluctuations sometimes occur is when you compare each school year's enrollment. As you know, we saw some drop in our third Friday count from a year ago to this year. And so as we talk more about budget in the future, we'll talk about what that means for us. But for right now, we're seeing a pretty consistent enrollment from September through January. Any questions?
Hi, Scott, this is Kimberly. How many students are we down then, from this January to last January?
I don't have the comparison of this January to last January, because, not that we couldn't compare those numbers, but we typically do a comparison, for sure, of last Thursday, last Friday a year ago to Friday, the third Friday this year. And we dropped over 70 kids from third Friday to third Friday. I didn't do a comparison of January last year to January this year, but I have to say, from consistency point of view, it's probably in that 60 to 70 reduction, just by nature of the numbers being fairly consistent within a given year.
Other questions for Scott?
So one thing I just wanna recognize, and I feel to do that before, is, you know, I share these numbers with you, but I can't take any credit. When they're good or bad, I can't take any credit. Tammy Baronic in the district office does our third Friday count and our second Friday count with our building offices, and so big kudos to both our, both our, all of our building offices, and to Tammy for all their hard work. These are really important numbers for state reporting, and I'm really appreciative that we have people that do a good job with it.
Other questions for Scott? All right, thanks a lot, Scott. Moving on to item 6C, shared learning reflections of WASBE/WASDA convention. Jessica and Jeff?
I can start. So I was able to attend the opening sessions each day, so I listened to Donald Driver speak, our current state superintendent, Caroline Stafford-Taylor. There also had the leader from the National Association of School Board speak, and then on the last day was Governor Evers. Those were all interesting and good. I'm not a football fan, so I was not excited about Donald Driver, but he did a good job. And he answered really nice, good, personal questions that were personal to his students and challenges that they found, so I thought that was really nice and a good way to connect with people. And then in terms of breakout sessions, I focused the ones that I went to on budget and finance, knowing that we're gonna have to work on the budget soon. I went to a few sessions related to equity, so that I could help support equity work that our district is doing. And then I attended one session on COVID-19, only because another session that I wanted to go to was canceled, only to learn that there is nothing new to learn, because Dr. Solerno shares so much information at our school board meetings, that everything she told us, I was like, "Oh, I already know all of this stuff." So that was relieving and good to know. I would say my favorite session was, I attended one that was about student voice, and there were several students that were part of the facilitators, and they did a great job. And they talked about Roger Part's Ladder of Participation, which I thought was a really nice tool. And, you know, just a nice way to think about how we are using students in our meetings. So I went to some good sessions overall. Like anything in our virtual world, it would have been better to be in-person and with my other school board colleagues to learn and discuss together, but it was good, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Jessica. Mr. Hannah?
Okay, I attended the Donald Driver and the governor's session on Friday. Donald Driver did a fairly good job, considering he he had it hard, you know, had nothing, grew up. The only time he got to sleep in a bed was when he went to college. At South Carolina University, first time he laid in a bed. Otherwise, he slept in a truck, U-Haul truck, with his family. Yeah, I enjoyed the part where he kept stating that always enjoy- always enjoy waking up to the next day, even though your day before may have been a bad day. You always look forward for the next day. Never ever give up. Because those that give up are usually the ones that take a wrong turn. And that to me was a pretty strong message toward kids that have mental health issues or suicide issues. And I don't, for the session on Friday, well, I don't know how he's going to find the money to work that out for this school district and all state budget, but good luck to him. Because it's going to be a hard one for everybody. Then I attended a school board, a session that talked about new members. A pre and post orientation for new members coming on in the boards. And I thought that was pretty interesting. They talked about what you need to know before you are elected and what you could do and what you can't do after you are elected due to agenda items and the oath that you have taken. And there was another one on long range plan. And I thought that was very interesting because listening to that one, it pretty much followed the basis that we took of putting together our facility needs plan that we started in late 2015 and spent most of 2016 going through before we put the referendum out for the high school and a little bit of money to the ELC and middle school. And they did it pretty much the same way. And they put everything they need in there so that they don't have to deal with it for at least 10 to 12 more years and they hope to get 15 to 20 out of it. And it was pretty interesting and that's about all I had time for because it just didn't have the minutes in the day at work to take off and get more in, but those were the ones that I enjoyed, so.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Diane, I'm going to put you on the spot and see if you have anything that you'd like to add in terms of your participation in the consideration of resolutions this year.
Well, I don't know that I have the actual final results all written down near me because I don't have that right here. In fact, I was just looking for it because I kind of thought you might put me on the spot. But I don't have that written right here. I can tell you that there were many of the resolutions passed. I'm trying to think. Trying to think if any of them failed. I can't remember right now and I wrote it down, but I don't have it right here. It was a lot, there was a lot of discussion. There's a lot of very good discussion and it was some pretty lengthy discussion on some topics, but it was all very, very good and important and yeah, so more to come on which resolutions. And I'm not sure if Kimberly from the committee has any sort of insight into which passed and which didn't. I just don't have it written right here.
I was hoping they would send a summary to us afterwards and they have not yet. What about the last one, the Native American resolution that came back? Do you happen to remember that one?
That one I do not.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
So Steve is, is, has volunteered to put the, the material that we've been talking about in his weekly report. So we'll have a chance to see it. Thank you. Anything, anything else on the WASBE convention? All right. So hearing on item 6D, review baseline assessment of racial equity, senior leadership team.
Good evening again, board members. The district continues its journey to become more culturally conscious. While attending a training some months ago, I struck up a friendship with a gentleman by the name of Mr. Harry Hawkins. I learned that he is the executive vice president for NEOMIA, which is the Center for Urban Leadership and Development here in Madison. I invited Eric to come visit with our leadership team and later a return visit with interested staff because we sought NEOMIA's help in completing our district's first equity assessment. In a moment, Brian and Sarah will talk a little bit about something called the SWOT analysis, which you'll find on page, I believe it is seven of this document. It helps our new task force that we have recently pulled together and eventually it's subcommittees, which will include students and parents. That really will shape our work moving forward. Districts successful in moving from a philosophy, from philosophy to action have established a framework for equitable decision making. Said another way, really what we're looking for is what are those things we need to consider from an equity lens when developing policy or seeking solutions to the complex issues that confront us? And we are beginning to call a framework of exemplars for this task force's consideration. This will be an evolutionary process. Sometimes we think of things as being something we need to just check off a list and be done with. That's not the case with this work. It will be evolutionary and I'm very pleased to introduce tonight Mr. Brian Johnson, our director of student services, and Sarah Straka, who have joined me on the Dane County Equity Consortium to talk about this assessment that was completed by an outside source, NEOMIA, the Center for Urban Leadership. Brian, will you start us off, please?
You bet. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for letting me. I just wanted to go through, you know, the, the point of this survey was to get a baseline assessment. It was, it interviewed about 15 staff members. And the purpose of it was to get a baseline to inform the work that NEOMIA would help us continue to do and to shape future training sessions and kind of recommendations for where to go. I'll go through it pretty quick, but I know we've talked as an SLT group about the importance of, we, we have had these discussions within our committee work, but really wanted to have it with everybody and have it, you know, for the public to be able to hear where we're at, what we've learned about our district and how we want to move forward. There were district-wide themes, six of them, that will kind of shape our work. That the district leadership is committed to focusing on equity. That came from principals, our SLT team, but also for, for the work that the school board has continued to do. One of the prime examples was the equity statement that was released a couple of months ago as a way of really being able to be visible, being able to take a stand and then moving it forward. Staff is motivated to do what it takes to improve racial equity. And that, that talked about many different standpoints and how we could move forward in strengths and weaknesses of the district. The district has experience with gender equity and community support. NEOMIA has talked a lot about we've, we've had, we've taken a stand within our district on something revolving equity, stood up strong. The community supported us and, and the board has dealt with that. And so really being able to continue that moving forward is, is great. The relationship with the school board has grown strong and continues to grow strong. That, you know, staff cannot clearly articulate the goals around racial equity. So what are our goals? What are we trying to accomplish? What does it look like to say that we're equitable? And so when Sarah talks about kind of our next steps and even our first meeting, like we're already starting to define those things. And so she'll get into that. And then some of our curriculum, you know, really looking at historical practices, being represented and making sure that we're up to date and sharing the most accurate information. And so one of the important tools is a SWOT analysis through this. And SWOT is for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so when you look at our strengths, we have strong support from the leadership to make the change. We have experience. We, our staff acknowledges that this, or that racial equity is an important focus and that we have strong support from the community and the board. Weaknesses are that we have a lack of understanding of non-white cultural experiences. We have a lack of consistent messaging across the district about what our goals are. And staff who are resistant to change are resistant to taking new approaches. And so those are all areas that we, you know, not area of stoppage, but an area that we'll have to continue to work on and, and reach and then continue to seek input on to get better in those areas. Because our opportunities are that we have the support from you as the board. We have support from the community. And that we, combining all of our long-term knowledge from our veteran teachers and the new ideas from new teachers can help us create the strategies to overcome our weaknesses. Some of our threats are that continued use of outdated or inaccurate curriculum. Resistance to changing traditions such as decorating for Christmas or other holidays that may not serve all students well. And, and this was one that we talked, that was talked to quite a bit, if you read the report, the Midwest nice attitude, right? Midwest nice is great, but sometimes that prevents people from staying open to the process of making change because we're not willing to, one, could do the confronting that needs to be done and also to be able to take that feedback. And so really kind of being able to potentially get past that to be able to have some hard conversations and not take it personal is, is a, is a great step forward. And so we've taken kind of this feedback and then we've already started to enact on it. And so that's, I think where Sarah's going to take over. So.
I am. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. So with, as Brian mentioned, that baseline assessment was the first part of our work with NEOMIA. But now we're working and collaborating with NEOMIA as we move forward with our district equity committee. And we reached out to staff members to gauge their interests and we now have 24 leaders within our school district who want to carry out the work with us. And then, and they comprise our main leadership team. So we have four staff members from the ELC, PC grade levels, five staff members from the IC grade levels, five staff members from the middle school levels and eight staff members from the high school level. So we have a nice assortment of staff members from various content areas, various positions within the school district. And we had our first meeting this past Wednesday and we will continue to meet monthly on the fourth Wednesday of every month. But the main purpose of our first meeting was to get an idea of why people were there and where they hope we can go within our time together. We set common, we started to set common definitions to understand what terms like racism means at a personal level and at a systemic level. Again, we talked about our goals and hopes and within those conversations, we talked about what scope and direction we wanted with those hopes and goals for the long term, three to five years. And then the shorter term, those three to six months and started talking about some potential action steps. And those action steps range from starting to analyze our data more and analyze our systems, which could be longer goals, to maybe revising our data equity retreat. Or looking at some interviews of, to get some insight of our students and families of color. So we started just to brainstorm those and we're going to come back together to understand a little bit more about how we can start to act on these goals and then narrow them down at our next meeting. So looking at those action steps that we can start right away. And our group is ready and willing to do the work. So it was a great first meeting. It lasted about 90 minutes and we'll continue those meetings monthly. And as Stephen and Brian said, as, as the work goes on and we have a direction, we'll be opening up that work to subcommittees where we can bring in families, other staff members and students.
Any questions for Sarah or Brian?
One of the, one of the last things to maybe add to that, at the very end of the meeting, we all shared one word that we kind of wanted to leave with. And it like motivated me more than, than, you know, any, anything could, right? Every word was hope inspired, motivated, determined, ready. Like it was all super powerful from every single school building that people are really ready to do the work and excited about it and really motivated. And so it was pretty inspiring.
Any further questions or comments? Awesome. We'll move on. Item 6E, COVID-19 update. Dr. Slernow.
Well, good evening again, board members. I thought you might enjoy a bit of a slideshow of today's first day back with kids. Of course, we continue to offer a robust online program for those families who seek it. But today was also an opportunity to on-ramp more families. I came across this quote that one of our teachers put in a, in a sign outside where the kids hang their quotes. It says, "You can't mask happiness." And all the kids' faces, it was just so sweet. This turns out to be actually our third first day of the year, believe it or not, as some of the teachers had reminded me as I was traveling through our buildings. Over at the Early Learning Center, our kids were all on fire, ready to learn, doing great things, as you can see here in a couple of our classrooms. And this also includes Coach St. Arnold with the kids getting ready to teach a lesson today that encouraged them to do some counting while jumping. Here's that, here's that picture I was telling you about. Can't mask happiness. No, we cannot because we are happy that our kids are back. We are taking extra precautions to be safe. This includes what you see here, lines in the hallways just reminding folks that they should stay physically distanced. And I think this is a cue of kids getting ready to, to head out to one of their specials and including their little puppies being socially and physically distanced as well. At the primary center, library day will continue as will learning in the classroom. You can see how our teachers have been just so creative in figuring out ways in which our kids can be physically distanced and learn safely. I happened to be up in Mrs. Lang's area here and I noticed this great bulletin board. Each of the kids made a little snow globe and then they wrote a little story about the, the weather. And so I happened to catch a couple of the kids. I said, hey guys, point to your snow globes along the way. And they just proudly shared their snow globe. It's just so cute. Thank you, Mrs. Lang. You can see her in this picture to the right for being there for our children and their families. PE is no exception and we still continue learning online in some capacity as well. Mrs. Pay here, teaching online music to the children here. I was in the lunchroom the other day wanting to just kind of see how lunch was moving about. And I had a couple of kids who wanted to pose for me, so they're all waving hello to us. You can see here again, the great thought that's gone into making certain our kids are safe, eating safely. And then we have a number of sites throughout the building as well that Rachel Johnson and her and his team have put together, including a little extra snow on the playground this morning for the kids to play on. And of course, the intermediate center. If you get a chance ever to swing by and see all that Mrs. Rudolph has done in the intermediate center to make it such a warm and environment and safe environment for kids, please do. You can see she's also done a very thoughtful job of identifying a number of culturally relevant books for our children to check out. There's one here that this little girl's checking out. It looks like it's called Hair Love. Maybe a book I need because I'm losing some hair. But also a couple of kids who are just excited to be back in the, in the library, getting some books to enjoy. And then in the classrooms, continuing to learn, we took a tour through all of the intermediate center classrooms on Friday afternoon. intermediate center classrooms on Friday afternoon. And I wish I could tell you and describe accurately how ready our teachers were and our staff were to receive kids. Yes, we're nervous. Yes, we're being cautious. Yes, we're being thoughtful. But we still have those first day bits of energy. You get so excited because you get to be around the kids and they were just, just like kids themselves on Christmas Day. It was absolutely like to see them and all they've done to help prepare for our kids. Uh, and that means also being thoughtful about where we're hosting gym, uh, taking larger groups of students and breaking them into two separate sections here. One in our regular PE area and then also in our cafeteria. A couple more, uh, opportunities to kids, see the kids outside learning and, and having some recess along the way. Some have asked me, hey Steve, but do the kids have to wear their masks outside? And the answer to that is yes, uh, if they're within six feet of others, but we also know that sometimes you just need a break from the masks too. So if the kids are not, uh, playing with one another within six feet, then we give them a little bit of a break when they're outside without their masks. Uh, I also wanted to take a moment to, uh, mention two things, if you don't mind, please. How do we keep this going? Uh, on Thursday night, the, uh, CDC, I believe it was Thursday night, uh, they, uh, submitted or shared a document, uh, a study actually that had been from Wood County, Wisconsin. I think that's up by Wisconsin Rapids area there, maybe Stevens Point. In what they call their morbidity and mortality weekly report, and God, what a dismal name for a report. Uh, they included, uh, a really good graphic and the one that I have here for you. Essentially, their study was to trace the impact of mask wearing, social distancing on COVID cases within the school community. And their findings are commensurate with other studies. It found very low incidences of positive cases within the school districts. And, uh, no link to transmission within the community as a result of kids being back in school. And this was a study of a significant, uh, number. Uh, what are the keys? Uh, there's no headline here that we haven't heard already, uh, before. Use masks, keep groups to no more than 20, maintain six feet of distancing if possible and quarantine after exposure. And you can see the number of individuals who were included in this study, about 7,000 of almost, uh, 4,900 students uh, during that 13 weeks of in-person learning contracted the virus and zero out of almost 655 staff members. So I thought this was an important thing for us just to keep at the forefront. Uh, we do require the wearing of masks regardless of what, uh, the state legislature might, um, decide to do differently. Uh, and that's because we are held to public health Madison Dane County's current mask order. And dare I say, if public health Madison Dane County were to suggest that they would not have that mask order any longer, uh, the district would still, uh, consider that being a must-have. Where to next? Well, uh, this is a document, a graphic that I've been sharing with families on Facebook and in each of our board recaps. I know there were some on Facebook who just had some questions about when does school start for the other grades. I wanted to share, share this out again, just so that there's no misunderstandings. Uh, we've also linked a number of our recordings that we've held, the town hall meetings. Middle school, uh, we get to see you in two weeks, February the 15th, A through K. And, um, we also will hold another parent town hall meeting, Principal Christensen, uh, Ms. Hanson, myself, maybe others. We'll do that on February 10th from 5:00 to 5:45 PM, simply clicking the link, uh, that is on the district's website. And then high school, we will start with you just three days later. Students last names L through Z, they'll begin on February the 18th. And here again, we'll have another update to families on, uh, February 11th, another town hall meeting for families. So. Really some exciting times in our school district uh, and opportunities for students and families to learn in an environment we hope is conducive to what they were seeking. And know that, uh, we haven't got everything covered. So if there's something you need us families to be considering, please know, we'd be happy to do that. Uh, we want to make certain that we do everything we can to support you the way you supported our staff and your beautiful children since March 13th of last year. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Awesome photos to start.
Oh, cool.
Those are great to see.
Steve, this Leah, I have one quick question. On the last, um, chart that you showed with the dates, there's an asterisk next to the high school and there's no asterisk on the image. So what is the asterisk? Is it just because it was a change so we put an asterisk or? Somebody asked me and I was like, I, I don't know, but I'll find out.
That's exactly right, Leah. It was, uh, a change, uh, that had occurred. You may remember we were gonna start our high school about three or four days later than we are, but we saw a window for us to get started sooner.
That's what I assumed, but you know what assuming does, so I thought I better ask.
Thank you.
Questions or comments on the subject or, or for Steve?
Oh, I like, I have one more question. On our COVID-19 dashboard that we have on our website, does that include 4K at all or are those just K-12 numbers? Again, I didn't want to assume.
Thank you. I don't know the answer to that. Brian, you're on the call still. Would you happen to know the answer for that or Sarah Eartham?
Yeah, I was gonna refer to Sarah. I know Sarah's kind of overseeing that. Um, there.
I hate to tell you something and be wrong, Leah. How about I find out and then I get back, uh, with you all and maybe even include that in my board recap?
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, hearing that we'll move on. We have no action items tonight. Uh, we're on to item 8A. Citizen comments, please text your first and last name to 608-250-9166. Nothing? We have no, no citizen towns participants. We'll give it another minute. That number again is 608-250-9166. Okay. We have no one for citizen comments? Going once? Going twice? Going three times for citizen comments. We're on to item nine, future agenda items. If you have any, uh, thoughts, please let, uh, Dr. Solano or me know. Item 10, schedule next meetings. Anything to, uh, to note here, Steve?
Uh, no.
Any questions about future meetings? Great, we're on to item 11 then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Kimberly.
Jeff has moved and Kimberly has seconded, uh, motion to adjourn. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.